Call the April 12th City Council Committee, the whole meeting, to order the clerk will call the role.
Arevolo?
Mike McGee.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe? Ratcliffe? Ratcliffe is absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under public comment, we have a gentleman here tonight. He's down further on the sewer backup Willow Street, but I want to give him first opportunity because he has to go to work as soon as he's finished. So Jeff, you want to come on up and visit with us? Oh, you were. Well, sit down then. Just kidding.
I come before you to request that I get some sort of compensation for the damage that was caused in my basement by the sewers overflowing. Now, I called a plumber after it happened, and he went out and looked at the at the streets and said that sewers were clogged. We tried to call the village. We got no answer at four or five in the morning, whatever it was. And then he went, he left, and I called, I don't know what time of the morning, I got ahold of somebody, and it was that Jesse Gonzalez, and he came out, and he confirmed what the plumber said. And I asked him, I said, "Is the city gonna stand good for this?" And he said, "Yeah." He said, "You just gotta fill out some kind of a form and show pictures," and I pictures and estimates and everything, and I finally got an answer from the insurance company and said, "We got no liability." Well, I didn't do anything. You know? And I feel I should be compensated some kind of a way for this. You know, I'm not looking out, I'm not looking to get every penny I can get. You know, I, my water heater is maybe about two years old, I think I can salvage that. You know, I lost a day's pay at work. I lost, you know, I got a huge electric bill because I can't run my furnace because it would distribute the contaminants throughout my house and my ductwork. So I was sitting in forty-seven degree house because I couldn't run my furnace. I was using a space heater. And then I just paid twenty-two hundred dollars to have the basement cleaned, and they were running six fans and a air cleaner, air scrubber for seventy-two hours, but you know, I'll take care of that. All I'm asking for is the money for the cleanup and to replace my furnace. So I was wondering if you can, you know, find it to help me out.
So, as you and I talked on the phone, that, that's why I wanted you to come and testify in person because there's a process. And I believe you had talked to the Public Works Director on the phone, right? Okay, Brett, I think you had a report on this for us.
Yeah, included in your packet memo with the support documentation. Basically, I'll just go through my memo. We were notified of the sanitary sewer back up at eight sixteen Willow Street, where we did find the main line backed up. We jetted the main and cleared the line. We then televised that main and found that roots were in the line. We then removed the roots. This segment of sewer main was last televised in October, on October fourteenth of 2019. And at that point, we, no deficiencies were noted. As Mr. Cannaby stated, he submitted a lost notice report to the insurance, to our insurance company outlining the cost incurred, he's looking for reimbursement on, including the, as he said, the cleanup and mitigation of the basement, as well as the furnace replacement, total of fifty-two hundred dollars. Our insurance company has denied Mr. Cannaby's claim, which is a copy of which is attached. And like Mr. Cannaby said, he's now requesting reimbursement from the city. As council knows from previous sewer backup issues, we handle these on a case-by-case basis. They're typically submitted to our insurance company for resolution, and depending on what the insurance company decides, then sometimes they come back to council. So it's really up to council on how you want to handle this. We've done everything from most of the time, I think, we've denied claims in the past, and the city attorney can speak to what happens when, if the council decides to do that. We have agreed to pay a portion of those costs in some instances. I don't recall if there's been a case where we've paid a total cost, a total request, there may have been, but I just don't recall them. So basically, it's up to council on how you want to do that. I'll let the city attorney comment on process and liability issues.
Go ahead.
I was waiting for the mayor to give me the okay. So the council, this comes before us every so often because we run a sanitary sewer system and sometimes things back up. And the advice that I can give really doesn't change. The claim was submitted to our insurance carrier, the insurance carrier looked at the claim, and as I've mentioned before, the Illinois Torrid Immunity Act basically creates legal immunity for the city in many cases such as this, where we did not know or have reason to know that it might back up. And the reason why the Torrid Immunity Act exists is it's a recognition by the state, after they got rid of sovereign immunity, that the municipality of the state of Illinois cannot be the insurance agency, the indemnity, or the indemnifier using taxpayer dollars for every possible hazard that might be out there for somebody. So what the insurance company has decided is that that Torrid Immunity Act means that we don't have a legal liability to pay this claim, and therefore, they do not have a legal liability to pay this claim. Because remember, they only pay out when we would be legally obligated to pay out. So they've reached the decision that we have no legal liability to pay the claim, and therefore, they don't. And as I've advised in the past, the next step in the process would typically be for the person who was, had this property damaged, if they did not like the answer of the insurance company, to file a lawsuit. In this case, it would be in small claims court. It's not a huge deal to do it. You can do it on your own, you don't have to have an attorney. Although certainly, you know, being an attorney, I always tell people to get an attorney before you go to court. But you don't have to have one. And during the course of that lawsuit, the insurance company either settled the case and actually pay him some way, some way he's asking for, or they could defend it, in which case, a judge would decide whether or not that Torrid Immunity Act protects the city. And if he finds that it doesn't, then the insurance company would pay out on the claim and pay whatever the judgment amount awarded by the court is. If the city decides to pay the claim on their own without going through that process, then it comes out of our general fund revenues with no chance of being recompensated from the insurance company. Because once we do that, we waive our ability to get reimbursement from the insurance company. So if you want to keep the insurance company on the hook and kind of go that route, obviously, then the lawsuit has to be filed. If you don't care about that, then you certainly have the right to pay the claim, but realize you will not get reimbursed down the road.
Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Did you say that we file a lawsuit, or the client, or the homeowner files a lawsuit? I didn't catch that.
Homer has to. We cannot. If we do, we waive all of our insurance.
Okay, do we have an option to appeal this to our insurance company? I mean, it seems like this should be a claim that they should pay, from what I'm hearing.
Two things. Number one, no, we do not have, they already went to the insurance company, they've already denied it. We have no right, we have no rights in this. It's all the homeowner's claim. He has the rights against the insurance company. So, he's already been to them, they said no. And while, and this is where it gets difficult to be a lawyer sometimes, you can look at this and say, "Well, our sewer system caused this damage." That does not equate to a legal responsibility to pay the claim. And what they're saying is, we don't have a legal responsibility to pay that claim.
And maybe this might help, Tom. For instance, let's say, just for instance, this block of Willow Street would have had, maybe looking back in history, and it might have had root claims or root issues previously or more than once. And if that was the case, then perhaps the insurance company's viewpoint would be different because we were aware of the root issue, and we didn't address the root issue in a timely fashion, thereby causing the backup. But I think one of the things they looked at is, we had no previous root information or indication that roots were an issue there, and in fact, we were there in 2019, TV'd that line, and there was no roots present at that time, so I think that probably made a difference. We have a list of, of locations throughout the city that we know, based on prior history and events, that there are issues, and we check those on a regular basis to make sure that the main stay clear. However, in this case, we did not have that indication.
Yes, Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Okay, I guess my question would be, is that really true that the insurance company has, I know that the city has torrid immunity, but do they really have torrid immunity? It doesn't seem like they should.
Yes, it is true. When we buy insurance from an insurance company, they step into our shoes. They are, in essence, the city defending the lawsuit. So they get all the defenses and immunities that the city has because it really is us, they're just providing the indemnification, the defense for it. So example, when he files a lawsuit, he doesn't sue the insurance company, he'd be suing the city of Belvedere. And we would, we would tender that to the insurance company for coverage. They would hire the lawyers to represent the city, and they would decide whether or not they want to settle it. And if it went to court and they lost, or we lost, they would be the ones to pay the claim, or the judgment.
Mr. Drell, would you explain the, the role of his private insurance in this?
Well, I don't know what his insurance policy says, so it's hard for me to say that.
Well, I think he can relate to us what his insurance company said.
Well, I recently changed insurance companies, and he claims I didn't have the sewer backup coverage. That's the problem. Even if I did, I have a thirty-three hundred dollar deductible, it's usually a percentage of the value of your home. So, you know, I mean, if you can find your, you know, way to settle for half of it, you know, twenty-six hundred dollars, anything would be, you know, appreciated.
Marsha, did you have some comments?
I did, thank you. So, any of you that have served on the council with me for the past four years all know how I feel about these claims. I think this is maybe the fourth or fifth person that has had an issue like this in the four years that I've been on the council. And I have advocated every single time that the city should be liable for these types of things that happen to homeowners through no fault of their own. Mr. Cannaby did not cause the backup, nor did he plant the tree that the roots caused the backup. Given that the city has never had a problem there before, I mean, there's always the first time, so I know that there's a corner on Strawberry and Marshall Street that about every six years there's a backup there. And I'm pretty sure that the city has that on their radar. However, now, we need to put this one on our radar, and in the meantime, why should a taxpaying homeowner be out five thousand dollars when they, they absolutely did nothing, nothing wrong? And it's basically, I see the city as liable for this.
Okay, anybody else have comments? Alderman Porter?
Well, I'd just like to remind everybody that city money is taxpayer money, so basically, what we're asking is for all of the taxpayers to pay for this, because eventually, it all comes out in the wash, that, you know, that it is taxpayer money.
Yes, Alderman Snow?
Can I comment to that?
Alderman Snow had a comment, and then we'll get back to you, Marsha.
So, Brett, a question for you. Since this is a sewer issue, and that is its own animal as far as that goes, does the, if there was a claim to be paid by us, does it actually come out of the general fund, or could it come out of the sewer water fund?
I actually misspelled, it could probably be sewer and water funds, not, not general fund. I'm so used to general liability, I reverted to general fund.
And since each water has their own rate structure, sewer has their own rate structure, so in this case, it wouldn't be coming out of the sewer side?
Which in its own right has its own funding mechanism per taxpayer, it's mitigated a little differently than just out of a general fund in that regard.
Well, on a comparative basis, instead of saying it's, it's going to be paid by all the taxpayers, it would be, it's being paid by everybody who has sewer service in the city of Belvedere.
Marsha?
Thank you. So Alderman Porter is correct that this is taxpayer money. However, you have to keep in mind that these taxpayers also pay their water and sewer bills and don't expect sewage backups in their basement wrecking their stuff. And the taxpayers also have to keep in mind that it may have happened to Mr. Cannaby this time, but it could be any one of them next time. And I'm sure they would all be wanting also reimbursed because they all pay their taxes.
Brett? And if I may, just a little background as far as sewer backups in general. For the last several years, we have averaged between ten and twenty backups of sanitary sewer mains in the city. Now, not all sewer backups, sewer main backups result in property loss. But on average, we are anywhere between ten and twenty, and that's looking over the last five years.
Alderman Porter?
And this is just for information only, I just wanted to put this out here, that I did call the furnace contractor about the furnace repair, and he did say, because it is sewer water, you know, I wanted to find out if a furnace really is damaged by, you know, water, if it's not running, if it actually can be cleaned, or, you know, just dry it out. He said, "Because it's sewer water, the furnace has to be completely disassembled, because if you run the sewer, or run the furnace with the sewer water, and you're gonna, of course, get it in your ducts and and in the, in the air in the house," so just FYI.
Alderman Stevens?
How old is your furnace?
I don't know exactly. It was there when I bought the house in 2016. It's a train furnace, ninety percent efficient. I don't know how to find out exactly how old it is.
Okay, because I was curious. It looks fairly, like a fairly older model, but, and we'll be playing for a brand new one, so.
Brett, did you have any comments on your observation of the photographs concerning the depth of the?
No, I think, I think the photographs are illustration, I'm assuming that they're probably the full pictures taken in probably the worst-case scenario. Was it, I assume it didn't get any deeper than that? Okay.
Before the village got there to fix the sewer.
Relieve the backup.
Yeah.
So I guess, at some point, there's going to be needed, well, I guess if council desires to make a motion, there will have to be a motion at some point.
Does someone have a motion they wish to make concerning this issue?
I just have one more question.
You can have as many as you want.
How, how deep did the water actually get? It's hard to tell from the photos here where the water line was.
Oh, on the furnace? I've got a picture of it if you'd like.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out here on the picture, just approximately.
I don't know, I was in my pajamas at the time, and the water it came up to about here. You can't see that.
It started higher than I could see. Okay, thanks. Does that sound right?
Yeah. Because the sewer is very close to the furnace. And it kind of, you know, goes like this, so the sewer and the furnace and the water heater got the worst of it.
So it came out through the floor drain, is that?
Yeah, when I came there, it was like bubbling out of the floor drain when I came home from work. I don't know what time it started, you know, but...
And then another, just reference also. Mr. Cannaby received the information on mitigation measures as far as backup control devices that, per the city's policy for sewer backups, so he is eligible to take advantage of those as well. I've discussed with those, those with him briefly this, this evening, and if he's got any questions or wishes to pursue one of those measures, we can do that subsequent to the meeting tonight.
Okay. Well, council, what would you like to do in this situation? Because we have to do, you know, make a resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, please go ahead.
I would make a motion for the city to reimburse Mr. Cannaby five thousand dollars for his loss contributed to a sewer backup in his basement.
Do I have a second for that motion? Motion by Alderman Freeman, do I have a second? Okay, is there another motion? Or a, a different amendment to the motion that was made?
No, Mr. Mayor, you did not, you have received a second, so you have the amendment, you have the motion.
So, does anybody have a new motion? Alderman Porter?
Well, I'm not sure the dollar amount, but I would suggest maybe a split somehow on this one, because you know, homeowners do have the option of having sewer backup insurance, so there, there is that possible, or you know, that part of the equation here that would have paid for part of this at least, so I'm just suggesting maybe a little bit of a split here.
Do you have an idea? Do you have a number in your head? Does anybody have an idea about a, a sharing of the cost?
I don't know if you guys agree, at least, if we can try at least pay for the full cleanup and mitigation basement, then maybe split the cost for the furnace, maybe half. I'm not sure how you guys feel about that. So it'll come out to thirty-seven hundred?
Is that a motion?
Are you making a motion to pay thirty-seven hundred?
I'll make the motion for thirty-seven hundred.
I have a motion to have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second now on the floor? Any other comments or conversation concerning the motion that is now on the floor to pay Mr. Cannaby thirty-seven hundred dollars? Alderman Snow?
And I, I get the full point, and I, I see the issue. The one thing, I'm not sure of all the mitigations, aside from putting in the extra pumps in that, and/or the valve, or in this case, he could also put a sand pipe in, correct, if he needed to?
Well, in this case, I probably would recommend, based on just my short discussion with him this evening, that probably a ball valve in the floor drain in the basement would probably be the best bet, based on what's going on and what's the drain that he has for the HVAC unit now that needs to drain, and the ball valve would probably be the most effective thing for him to utilize. And we, per our policy, we reimburse a hundred percent of the cost, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars.
And that is for the parts and the labor?
That's for everything, yeah, that includes everything.
Okay, and I would, I would...
But that would be, that would not be tied in with, that's completely his option.
And, and I guess I would tie it in in the fact that if we could tie that in, if we're gonna pick up a substantial portion of that cost to do that, that the thirty-seven hundred dollars be predicated on that occurring at some point, only because then we don't wind up in a trick bag again, and we've done our best to mitigate this particular location. Just tossing that out there as a possible amendment, if that's viable, and it looks like the attorney has something.
Not on your issue, and I don't want to clutter the floor, so if you're making a motion to amend, you may want to state that.
I would, I would make that motion that the thirty-seven hundred dollars be predicated on a mitigation of some sort being done at this location.
But our cost or out of the thirty-seven hundred dollars to pay for the mitigation?
No, we reimburse, we reimburse up to X number of dollars.
Yeah, per your, per your backup control measure policy that we have currently, we would pay for a hundred percent of that cost up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So if it costs two thousand dollars to install a ball valve vent in his floor drain, the city would pick up that cost. If it costs four thousand dollars to do that, we would pick up twenty-five hundred of it.
So that would be in addition to the proposed thirty-seven hundred dollars?
That would be in addition, correct. But he, now that he has, has suffered a backup, he is now eligible for that program.
So, we have a amendment to the original motion to require...
Can I make a comment to that?
Sure, go ahead.
So Alderman Snow has a, has a good idea there, however, you have to remember because Mr. Cannaby is going to have the mitigation effort done, if this happens again on Willow Street, it might bypass his house, but it's gonna go to the next house that doesn't have that mitigation effort done, and you're gonna find yourself right back up here with another homeowner that's his neighbor.
Okay. Snow?
At this point, like you had mentioned earlier, Marsha, that the this is now going to be on the city radar in order to monitor and try to keep a better eye on this condition. Now, mind you, that was only two years or so that this occurred, and that could easily happen again. But I, I think, yes, you are correct, that you could wind up with somebody in the neighborhood, but again, hopefully, you know, not everybody has a floor drain that's readily accessible like this one is.
So let's clear the air here. There's a motion and a second to pay thirty-seven hundred dollars to Mr. Cannaby. That's one, one issue. Then, if Mr. Cannaby requires, asks the city to install the ball valve, then we would do that at our cost. This is not part of this motion added into this motion.
No, Mr., Alderman Snow has made a motion to amend to require the city's mitigation systems. There's not been a second yet.
Okay, do we want a second to that motion? That this, for us to, for us to approve the thirty-seven hundred dollars, we're going to also approve that we spend up to twenty-five hundred dollars on the ball valve? That'd be an amendment to the motion. Alderman Porter, then Alderman Stevens?
Well, Brett, how much does it normally cost over the twenty-five hundred to have this done? Is it dependent on every situation?
Yes, each, each situation is independent of the other. All depends on what's there, how it's constructed, so on and so forth, so. How this would work, according, again, according to our policy that we have in place is the property owner would hire a plumber to do that work, he would get that quote to have that work done. He would submit that quote to myself for review, and we'd review it and approve it. The plumber would then proceed with the work, and he would submit a copy of a paid invoice to the city for us to reimburse or pay for, depending on what that total is.
So then, motion on the floor should read thirty-seven hundred dollars plus whatever the cost up to the limit of twenty-five hundred dollars that would cost to install the ball valve. So we have a motion for that amendment, do we have a second for that amendment to add that to the previous motion?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second? So we have a motion and a second. And so then the motions at this point is for a $3,700 reimbursement plus the installation of a ball valve up to a maximum cost to the city of $2,500. Does that make, we have a motion and a second to that? Any other additional comments?
At this point, we'd be voting on the, the, up to the $2,500 stipulation, the, the amendment, is what we're gonna be voting on.
In favor of the up to the $2,500 stipulation, well, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Seven in favor?
So the motion, the amendment to the motion is passed. So then we go back to the original motion with the amendment, yes, Ald, uh, whatever your name is.
Attorney Drela. And if the, if the first and the second to the original motion agree, that'd be Alderman, Rivalon, Alderman Freeman. And with the consent of the council, obviously, the payment of the settlement amount would be contingent upon the homeowner executing a release, releasing the city of any future liability with regard to this backup. That's typical what you do, the insurance company would make them do it too. If he's gonna take the $3,700, he's gotta release us from any other liability with respect to this claim. So I guess I'd ask with the first and second agree.
Does that need to be stated in the amended motion?
I would prefer it, yes.
Okay, so read back to me, the amended motion, including your addition, please. So everybody is aware of precisely what we're voting on.
The final vote would be on a motion to approve a $3,700 payment to Mr. Cannaby with respect to the wastewater backup at his house that he suffered. Ah, went too far. On a... What date was it?
March 25th.
March 25th, 2021. Subject to him installing a city-approved backup control device, with the city contributing up to 2,500 additional dollars towards that, and him executing a release of liability to the city with respect to any other claims he may have with respect to that backup.
So let's start over again. All those in favor of the amended motion with the codicil professed and required by the city attorney will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Five in favor?
So five out of nine's the majority, and it passes. So, sir, you have a settlement.
But that being said, we have to finalize this at next week's meeting, so.
It has to go to council for final approval, but it's been approved at this point.
Okay, what do I have to do?
Wait and see what the coun, what the council, full council says at the next meeting, but I would say, I, I can't tell you what they're gonna say then.
Oh, okay.
But it's a good sign, we're, we're on the way to success here.
Okay, do I have to be here at the next meeting?
You do not have to be here. If you would like to be here, you would be welcome.
He can comment again, make his argument again.
Of course.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
He was saying something about a sand pipe, what's that?
It's basically the drain, when you know you could have issues, like if you were prone for flooding or rain events, you can either leave the pipe in the, in the drain so that it becomes your highest point of water, or, and if you had a need for the drain, you could remove it and use the drain for whatever you need.
Oh, I think I know, I think my dad...
Yeah, you're basi, you're basically just raising the elevation of that floor drain, so. The sanitary sewer works, works with gravity and it seeks its own level, so unfortunately, when the main backed up, you were at, you had the lowest spot, so that's where it seeked, it seeked its relief. And if you were to take that floor drain then and extend that higher up through a standpipe or some other measures, even sandbags or what have you, raise that elevation, you could have raised it to the point, you could have raised it to the point where it would not have backed up. That typically happens when it's, when we have sewer backups in areas where, where, that are prone to flooding, and that we just get groundwater stuff that infiltrates the system as opposed to something like this where it's an individual backup, but it's still effective. But like I said, in, in your case, with what you have with the drains and the drains operational, that's probably not your best, but is, is also an alternative. And again, we can go through those before you decide on what method you choose.
Yeah, I think my dad had that, you take off the drain cover, and it's a pipe that screws into the drain, and I don't know, it's maybe about four or five, three, I, or something.
It also gives a, something, or that little pump for the furnace for the condensation, that's what ours was, hooked up to the, hooked up actually to a high point, a pipe like that.
Yeah, again, each one of these are individual, there's probably no two or not very many that are the same. And it'll be reviewed, and we'll, of course, offer the best options for them.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for coming. Pleasure to meet you. Okay, so let's go back to Public Works Unfinished Business, item A, Stormwater Utility Implementation Phasing. It was tabled August 10th, 2020. Was there a reason somebody wanted to talk about this?
Just keep it on the table would be my recommendation.
Okay, is that all right with everybody, we'll just keep it on the table? Okay. Then under B, under number two, we have the Public Works Update. Director Anderson, please proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quickly, just on the wastewater treatment plant side, we had our pre-construction meeting with Williams Brothers Construction for the 2018 Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvement Project this last week. The tentative schedule calls for completion of the project in December of 2022. However, the contractor noted that they're, they are experiencing long delay times for certain materials and which may extend that completion date, so as we begin receiving our submittals and reviews and approve those submittals so they can be released to the material suppliers, we will then have a better idea on what kind of delays we're looking at. And probably one of the biggest items on this project is putting a new, fabricating a new roof for the digester, for the secondary digester tank, and the metal and stuff required for that. And those are what's, could be extended lead times, so we will have a better idea. But at least as of right now, it looks like that project will be scheduled to be wrapped up in December of 2022. Quick update, 407 West Madison Street, I did hear back from the owners of 405 West Madison Street on the east side of the subject property, and they indicated that they are not interested in the purchase. I'm still waiting for a final answer from the owners at 415 West Madison. I should have that within the next week or so, so I should be able to come back to city council, or the committee meeting, the last committee meeting in April with, with that information and, and options for the city council to consider. On the water side, included in your packet was the commendation letter for fluoride from the Illinois Department of Public Health for us maintaining our perfect compliance in 2020 in accordance with the Illinois Public Water Supply Regulation Act. That's always good news. And then on the street side, we are halfway through our spring branch pickup. We've completed the east side of town, and we are currently in the southwest side this week, and we will be proceeding to the northwest, northwest side next week. That's all the updated information I have, if anybody's got any questions.
Okay. Under number three, Building, Planning and Zoning Unfinished Business, there is none. Under number four? What? Trip Road Recapture?
You can move on down to those others if you want to come back to Public Works.
Okay, I thought you, you were just picking which ones you were gonna tell us about.
All right, next, Trip Road Recapture Ordinants, there's actually a memo there drafted from Mr. Drela. Attaches the ordinance, as you know, Trip Road improvements have been completed, that was on a joint project basis with the developer and the city participation. The purpose of the recapture agreement is to recover the city's portion of the cost as development takes place to the east of Trip Road for those properties, and to the west of Trip Road, actually, for those properties yet to be developed, I would recommend. Motion to approve an ordinance establishing the recapture for Trip Road reconstruction between Crystal Parkway and Corporate Parkway in the city of Belvedere.
Motion by Snow, second by Porter, questions or comments? Yes, Snow?
I have a question.
Snow first, then you, Marsha.
So the, the bigger cost of, at the bottom, the maroon color of almost 80,000, is that potentially gonna be where we might recapture some of that from the potential new annexation building of a gas station facility?
I would foresee that to be a discussion point on that annexation agreement. Marsha, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you. So Brent, all of these, all of these are vacant properties, right? So this is for potential people to come in and develop on these, on these plots?
Uh, they're most, the majority of it is undeveloped land right now. There are two developments, one's the Nikor Gas Facility, and the other one is the church. Both of those projects are included because they're adjacent, and they were included in the recapture because they have footage immediately adjacent to the Trip Road improvement. It was set up, the recapture was set up such that if, if redevelopment occurs on those properties or improvements occur on those re-properies, then they could be subject to the, the recapture as well.
Okay, so you're, it says the city expended 268,028, but if I add these all up, it only comes to 175,501?
I'll double check the math on the, on the exhibit, I worked with GIS department to put those together, so I'll double check that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Have a motion and a second? Yes.
So, Brent, so for example, that, I believe it's the church there, so if they don't do any kind of upgrading to their existing property, they wouldn't have to pay anything, it's just that if they, in the future, they change something, that's when they would have to co, pay that?
Correct. With the amount of vacant land around, around the property there, and potential development that could take place, that may or may not change the activities on that property, but if it were to change or updates or be, changes made, then yes, it would apply.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously, takes us to item D, Tornado Sirens in the Maintenance Agreement.
Yeah, again, in your packet, there was a proposal from Braniff Communications to extend or continue the maintenance agreement for our tornado siren system. The amount of the agreement is $5,580. The budget includes $7,000 for the tornado sirens. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Braniff Communications in the amount of $5,580 for the maintenance of the siren system.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rublo, second by Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor?
I have a question for Brent.
Alderman Snow, and then Alderman Freeman.
So Brent, what did we pay the last time for the same type of deal?
I'm gonna defer to the city finance. I don't know, because I usually don't see these invoices.
It was very close, I'd have to check, it might have been 5,550, somewhere in that range, it, it doesn't fluctuate very much.
Alderman Freeman, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, I, so this is a preventative maintenance, which doesn't really cover the actual maintenance. I couldn't really figure out what was included and what was not covered under this agreement. But it's basically inspection, right?
It includes inspection, it does include replacement of some, I call them wearables, durables, but I don't know exactly which ones, I'd have to go back and refresh myself on the, on the agreement. But however, we do have some, some major issues that creep up from time to time, and those are all done individually, back to council with a report on what happened, what transpired, what needs to take place. And those are brought back to you on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Snow?
And this might be more directed toward Becky, particularly with her experience with the county. Is this the same group that would tend to do the county as well, and do we, we, and they have a vested interest in trying to combine anything that might save us in general? Or is it too muddy the water and not really worthy of pursuing?
Well, I, I know the county uses Braniff as well, so it's definitely the same, the same company that handles the city as well as the county. Brent might be able to speak better to that than me.
Well, I don't know, I can't say for, for sure, but I'm thinking you're, you are seeing a reflection of, of having the two siren systems basically in one general area, you are receiving that benefit for that cost analysis, because obviously, when they schedule it, they'll come out and do both at the same time. So you're probably realizing some cost savings there.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the Braniff motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously, brings us to item E, Farmington Ponds 2021 Maintenance Agreement.
Again, memo in your packet, we received our proposal for the 2021 maintenance of the Farmington Ponds from Lakeland Biologists, there's some compare, cost comparisons you can do there over the last three or four years. I would recommend entering an agreement with Lakeland Biologists for the 2021 Farmington Ponds Maintenance Program at an estimated cost of 16,000. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Special Service Areas. The maintenance budget for the Farmington Ponds is 22,200.
May I have a motion of that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rivalo, may I have a second? Second by Porter, questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor, concerning the Farmington Ponds Maintenance Agreement? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Farmington Ponds 2021 Maintenance Agreement is approved unanimously. Next up is General Mills Park Easement Agreement.
Now, that one, we're gonna defer back to the end of the, end of the committee meeting, when we talk about 5C, the General Mills Grant for 2021, because one is dependent on the other, so. We'll move ahead to item G, the 2021 MFT Street Maintenance Program. Again, this was submitted to council previously for review and comment, there's been one minor change, I think in Ward Two, we added West Madison Street from State to Lincoln, and we took West Marshall, one block of West Marshall and Royal Avenue, and we moved them back on the list, right now, they're tentatively scheduled for next year's overlay list. Again, the quantities offset each other, so there's no change in, in... Right now, they're tentatively scheduled for next year's overlay list. Uh, again, the quantities offset each other, so there's no change in, in estimate and cost wise. So I would recommend approval of the twenty twenty-one M F T Street Maintenance Program.
Motion by Snow, may I have a second? Second by Porter. Questions or comments? Alderman Stevens?
I'm going also want to make one change. West Ninth Street between Fifth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, that's in front of my house. It's perfectly fine. There is one over in the eighteen hundred block, and I forgot to grab my note, I think it's Eleventh Avenue. There's actually holes that you can see the gravel fall through. So I'd rather take mine off and put that on, and I will have to get you the exact street. But I think it's Eleventh Avenue.
Okay, if council wants to proceed with this, I'll have to make that, with that noted change, I can go ahead and have that revised and get that in the packets for Monday night.
Any other additions or subtractions? Hearing Alderman Porter?
Uh, I just had a question, I guess it's along that same lines, is how, how you decide which streets do, I mean, do you actually take the streets that are, um, have problems, or do you just do it on a scheduled, you know, maintenance type thing?
No, we try to review our streets on an annual basis, uh, because some, some deterioration happens faster than others. We look at the history, we, we look at when the last overlays were, uh, what their current conditions are, um, and it's basically a combination of those factors that we utilize. Keep in mind that we've got way more candidate streets than we have, uh, funds available to do. I would like to do a lot more overlays, but we just don't have those funds available on a, on a regular continuing basis to do that. So, um, it's a matter of, of, like I said, just like now, Ninth Street, we will put that back, we'll push that back, and we'll see where, where it comes up, uh, after our reviews for next year.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item H, the I E P A PFAS Notification. Since the menu, or, excuse me, the memo is from Attorney Drella, did you want to talk to us about this, or did you want to have Brent talk to us about this?
Well, it's probably going to be a tag team, perhaps.
Okay, let's go.
I will start, though. And again, it was, it was memo put together by the city attorney as well as a, uh, um, water system customer letter that was, that was, uh, formatted, uh, through recommendation by I E P A, completed by myself. Uh, it's basically the memo from the city attorney, the Illinois EPA has adopted guidance policy relating to certain, and I'm just going to call them PFAS, um, because I'm not going to try to pronounce the technical term there, in community water supply systems. This guidance does not yet have the force of law, but it is likely that it will in the near future. PFAS are a group of chemicals that are commonly used in food packaging, commercial household products, and various common manufacturing and commercial industries. The U S EPA provides an overview of PFAS at the following link. While there's no definitive link between PFAS products and health, the Illinois EPA and federal EPA have identified adverse health effects in animals. They do not have a definitive formula determining what level of exposure would be necessary to establish adverse health effects in humans. The federal EPA has established a health advisory for two PFAS chemicals, including PFOA and PFOS, and recommends limiting exposure in drinking water to seventy parts per trillion, not one million, not billion, but parts per trillion. The Illinois EPA has more strict recommendations, creating, creating a guidance level of two parts per trillion for PFOA and fourteen parts per trillion for PFOS. Obviously, the I E P A's guidance levels are significantly more stringent than the U S EPA. I E P A indicates that they believe the U S EPA will be lowering their guidance in the near future. I E P A has notified the city that only one city well had PFOA concentrations exceeding the I E P A's guidance levels. All their wells and all their PFAS fell within the I E P A's current guidance levels. As part of their, their process, I E P A is going around to all the public water supply agencies within the state of Illinois and doing sample PFAS testing on all water wells. They have not tested well number four and well number five as of yet, uh, city, because those have been, as you know, shut down for repairs and rehabilitation. So those will be tested once those wells are put back online. Uh, but so far, only well three has an exceedance. I E P A has requested that the city post the attached notice to its water users on the city website. I E P A is making similar requests of all public water systems that exceed any of its guidance levels for PFAS. While compliance is not yet dictated by law, in an abundance of caution, well number three has been removed from active service. Further, we recommend complying with the I E P A's public notice request. While not yet compulsory, it is likely that I E P A will establish formal rules on PFAS in the near future. Cooperation now will likely make it easier to work with the I E P A as rulemaking is promulgated. Also, early compliance will assist in staving off any future potential liability that could arise with respect to PFAS. Uh, I guess PFAS is just, I guess, coming into its own. This is all going to be part of the process. It's going to be, I think, a long process, and I think it's going to affect a lot of things. Probably more so than just water. It's going to be, it's going to be a topic that'll be discussed, uh, frequently. The other thing that we're going to have to do, or we are recommended, being recommended to do by I E P A is begin quarterly testing of our two wells that have been found with PFAS in it so far. Those tests, the laboratories that are capable of doing those tests to the parts per trillion are limited. We are in the process working with I E P A to identify those laboratories so we can get some pricing back, because, uh, I E P A would like us to start that testing in May. So this was for information for the council, to give you a heads up on it before we plan on putting this, uh, notice to the customers out on the city's website. We'll post it tomorrow. So it is there, and then we will, we will respond accordingly with the I E P A. Fortunately, our water usage at this point in time is such that we're running about three million gallons a day on average, um, slightly less than what we have been. So even with well four and well five off, we are still able to, um, put well number three offline. And hope, uh, we will plan on keeping that offline until such time as we either decide, uh, we'll go through and see what the costs are going to be to remove the PFAS substances down to, to less than two parts per trillion, or conceivably, it could be more cost effective just basically to abandon that well. Well number three is our oldest well. It was drilled in nineteen, I think in the nineteen tens. Uh, it is located down by, uh, metal, it's, it's located right down to Water Department, two ten Whitney, which, uh, in history wise, was right in the middle of the industrial district, uh, back at the turn of the century, so. It is not surprising that, uh, PFAS, uh, would be showing up in that specific well, just based on the, on the history and what was done there. And the PFAS chemicals, it's a whole suite of chemicals that were produced. They're all, um, manufactured, man-made chemicals, and they're used in just about everything. If you Google up PFAS or go to the, go to the links that were included in, in the correspondence tonight, um, you can get a quick education on all the stuff that could be affected with PFAS.
Yes, Alderman Porter?
Just one quick question. Brent, these wells, they all interconnect, correct? It's, they all mix with each other. It's not like one well services one part of the town or that type of thing?
Yes, all of our wells pump directly, uh, into the main or, or through, through storage tanks ultimately into the mains, uh, which are all pressurized. We have run one pressure zone, so yes, all waters is co-mingled with each other, correct?
Alderman Snow?
I have a question.
Just a moment, please.
So I, I gathered based on your, one of your last comments, this is potentially filterable material that can be removed that, to mitigate potentially if it's cost effective?
Well, that's the big question, cost effective. So far, from what they know, um, it's difficult to remove them. They don't degrade over time. Uh, they stay the same, so it's, it's difficult to remove them. It's not like removing iron, like we have to do at well number ten. Um, it's a whole different situation. They don't have a lot of experience with it as of yet, but they are gaining more experience all the time. So again, we'll have to do some reviews and, um, come up with, uh, what those costs are, and ultimately decide if it's going to be worthwhile to treat or to shut off. Fortunately, well number three is not one of our biggest producers. It's not like well number eight or well number ten. So on that aspect, that's a good thing, um, but we will have to wait and see.
And do we have, um, water uses that, that well could be used just strictly for, um, I realize you can't isolate the whole system, but, for instance, if the, um, district fire department, which uses tankers, if they needed to refill, would they be able to use something like that in lieu of just hooking up to one of our hydrants and using good water?
Probably not, because as I indicated, water is just probably just the beginning with PFAS. They're going to be looking at soils, they're going to be looking at it all over. And where it's at, it could be like lead paint, and you know, lead content in paint and pipes and same thing. Uh, it could be that same kind of scenario. We're looking at for this as well, so I would say, no matter what use ultimately you would want for that, you would probably going to have to comply.
Thank you.
Alderman Freeman?
Um, thank you, but my question was just asked and answered.
Okay. So, moving ahead to number three, building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, there is none this evening. Which brings us to number four, building, planning, and zoning new business, the planning and zoning department update. Mr. Rose, you have the floor.
Quick updates with what the department's been working on in March. Uh, we have one special use for video gaming on Belvedere Road. It was Lacy's Place, which closed down for over a year, so they lost their special use. Someone wants to open it up. On the bright side, that strip mall, once it was built, remained empty or mostly empty for a very long time. This special use would be occupying the last tenant space available in that strip mall, so it is nice that in the last couple of years, that strip mall, um, has found tenants. Did a couple of site plan reviews for, uh, General Mills. And, uh, the Ultimate Car Wash Express, um, as stated, last month, they're still moving forward. Have a, I just received another video gaming special use application for Casey's gas station, and that'll be going forward next month. Um, have been working with several downtown business owners. If, um, you haven't noticed, the facade at six oh three South State Street, which was, uh, La Dos Compadres, got repainted to black and yellow. It was repainted to black and yellow because that is the business colors for Olive O' Taco, which is a taco truck out of Rockford, and they are, um, getting a storefront in Belvedere. It's their very first storefront, and they're a very popular taco truck. Um, they've been parked on Logan Avenue, trying to, um, get the community familiar with them. So, uh, we'll be welcoming that, that storefront. Did a couple more zoning letters. As stated, as a property seller, especially duplexes, they want that zoning verification. Um, have been working with several property owners that plan on applying for the Historic Preservation Property Maintenance Grant. If you remember, that grant is funded solely by the fundraising activities that the commission does. I know several of the aldermen here have attended those fundraising activities. They vary from progressive dinners to haunted house tours to scavenger hunts. And they've been quite successful, so we're able to give property owners, um, grants to help with tuck pointing the chimneys, repainting the wood siding and stuff like that, that the older homes usually become too cost prohibitive for their residents, um, to maintain. So there are several that plan on applying. Um, the deadline's May thirty-first. Still working on Heritage Days and Buchanan Street Strolls and watching closely the, the COVID numbers and working with the health department on the COVID action plans. Um, because obviously that's always subject to change, so spending a lot of time, um, trying to stay ahead of the game on those two events. Uh, Papa Grove has a tax amendment moving forward. I also have a tax amendment for city council. I've been holding off on it, hoping that, um, all of us would be meeting in person again soon, because I know usually the tax amendments are the cases that the council has the most questions on, um, just because code language is not everyday language. And, um, I think the discussions are easier in person, so I've been holding off. But now that, uh, again, COVID is not wrapping up as quickly as everyone thought, I'll probably be pushing that forward. And if any, um, council members have any questions before the meeting, then I, I urge you to, to contact me to discuss that. So that will be moving forward either next month or the month after. The department had a shadow. There is a junior high student that is interested in urban planning and historic preservation. So during spring break, he usually comes out and hangs out with me for about four hours, um, just going through what's going on in the city. I let him look at site plans. Amazing kid, so he hung out with me a couple of weeks ago. I sent out a hundred and fourteen facade grant letters. That is the grant that's similar to the historic preservation grant, but this one is funded by the video gaming revenue. So whenever the budget's approved, then I send out those letters, and it goes to, um, mostly the downtown properties where historic preservation is mostly residential, because it's the landmark properties. This one is mostly commercial. And I already got my first phone call back from that letter today with someone interested in applying for it, so I, um, believe we'll get a bigger response this year to those grants than we did last year. And that's it.
Okay. So, we want to tackle the resolution?
So the next one is the zoning map. Per state law, we have to adopt our zoning map every year. Which might sound a little cumbersome, but let me tell you, I'm familiar with the municipality right now that has not adopted a zoning map in about fifteen years and don't even know where their last one was. So how you enforce any kind of regulations when you don't even know, one, your village boundaries, and two, where, what's zoned what. It's really good that we have an official one that we adopt every year. The only changes that were made this year compared to last year was the cemetery. As you remember, we annexed, uh, the remainder of the cemetery, so that now needs to be reflected on our zoning map. And the Funderburgh House was rezoned to institutional, um, once the museum got ownership of it. So those are the two changes made from last year's official map.
I would propose a motion to approve the resolution. May I have one from the floor, please? Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Porter. Questions or comments? Further discussion concerning the resolution now on the floor. Alderman Porter?
What was that second one after the cemetery? I didn't catch that for the change.
The Funderburgh House, it was rezoned from residential to institutional so that the museum can operate in it.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the resolution now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution is approved unanimously, which brings us to item C, which is the building department update.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Chairman, please proceed.
In March, we had a total of sixty-nine permits issued for a value of just under one million five hundred thousand dollars. Fifty-six of those were residential, thirteen were commercial. We issued four single-family homes, um, some commercial projects that are ongoing, or started, was the canteen expansion at General Mills and the car wash out by the Speedway. And on a, another note, the Region One and closed on Nettie today, one of the abandoned houses that the city took back and then turned over to Region One. The other two do have offers on them, but I don't believe they've closed yet. As far as property maintenance, uh, we closed twenty-five cases last month, and right now we have twenty cases open. Have any questions?
Any questions for the director? Alderman Frank?
So, um, when you say, uh, Region One, uh, the house on Nettie, it's closed, what do you mean that it's been given back to the food bank or the, the land bank?
The land bank processed the, the sale of the property, and, and there'll be new owners on there, so it'll go back on the tax rolls.
Yes, no questions or comments? Alderman Porter?
I was just curious, over in Ward One, around the twelfth street area, we're going around that area not too long ago here, and noticed it looked like there probably like three abandoned houses that are completely empty. Is there anything that you have on those?
I can't help you without the addresses. If you want to get that to me or Kara, Kara or I, we can look. I, we can look into them. We can ask, we can check and see if the water's on or off or the power's on or off.
Any other questions of the Director? Thank you. Doctor Countryman? Which brings us to other, and item A is the sidewalk cafe ordinance. Attorney Drella?
This comes before the council. You recall-
I confess to an air in my mental to do a miracle last second. But as you recall, we actually made an amendment to the saddle cafe ordinance back in March of last year, which is my slight air in my mental. And then subsequently, we elected to modify the saddle cafe ordinance on temporary basis to assist downtown businesses that were being impacted by COVID so they could stay open and serve food and alcohol on the sidewalks more easily. So one of the things that our temporary ordinance did, that was ordinance 496H, was waive the $75 application fee for all establishments with saddle cafes, excuse me, for 2021. We then modified size requirements for sidewalk cafes. Our required compliance with DCO executive laws and health department laws and regulations require them to be open for inspection. And a couple errors occurred within our number five in my mental. That was not the first time that we allowed alcohol in such saddle cafes. That was the March amendment that did that. I'm not confusing that one from the other amendment. What we did do is the base code that we created in March requires an entity to serve at least 50% of income from food in order to serve alcohol outside on a sidewalk cafe. And what the temporary ordinance did was suspend that requirement and allow students to bar to serve alcohol in saddle cafes for fiscal year 21. That ordinance is expiring, and all the saddle cafe requirements expire as of April 30th, 2021. So what the clerk's office and I have a question for the council is, what would you like to do? We could simply extend the existing ordinance for an additional year. You could let it die and require it to come in compliance with the code as originally written, which would require it from foods. We may make the ability to serve alcohol outside of less at least 50% of revenue can from food and some other factors as well. Or it could direct us to modify the base code to promote before we're done for last year.
What's the pleasure of the council? Alderman Porter?
Well, since COVID, it still seems to be a problem here, and there's having rising cases. We maybe should think about keeping it the same for now. The only thing is, I would like to see that we establish that we keep the 50% food to alcohol part of it, because I think that's pretty important. I don't know if we should be just serving alcohol, you know, out on the street.
I would point out that for most of last year, really only two establishments took advantage of this provision. One was the Firebox along with the Short Line Restaurant next door, serving sushi. And they did have some tables out there where they sold mostly food, and you could buy a beer or whatever and have that outside with it. The only other establishment to really take advantage of it was the Jack Rose Bar next door, and they really don't serve much in the way of food. It's primarily a bar. So I don't know if that weighs into your factors, but with only two of them really using it, and one of them really doesn't serve food.
Alderman Snow?
I would make a motion to extend it for an additional year as it's already written.
I have a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
I'd second that.
Motion by Snow, second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or opposed discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of extending for a year the policies that are in place currently? Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arrevalo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
It will be extended for a year unanimously by those present this evening. Next up is the audit agreement with Sickich LLP. The finance director will present. Becky, you have the floor.
So what you have before you, this is, we are in year three of a three-year agreement with our auditors, so it's very standard for them to give us an engagement letter every single year, which is part of your budget and something that you also approved three years ago. The reason it's before you tonight is because of Appendix A. This has to do with a lot of different, the scope of service for items that need to be done in order to be able to do the audit. And since I will not be here, somebody has to do this work. I'm trying to get done as much as I can. I might still be able to get some other items done, but at some point, the auditors are going to have to step in and help do some of this work. You'll notice at the bottom, it's a not to exceed $15,000. The hope is that it will be much less than that, but this is just kind of a worst-case scenario as to how much work that they're going to have to do. So at this time, I guess I'd be looking for a motion to approve Appendix A of the engagement letter with Sickich.
I have a motion to that effect. Motion by Snow, may I have a second, please? Second by Porter. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Just a moment, please. Alderman Stevens?
So you say this is the third year of a three-year contract. This is our last year, then, with this?
Correct. So next year, it'll either be going back out to bid for a different auditor or, and obviously, they would, you know, probably submit a proposal, but there would be an additional proposal.
Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So Becky, when, when are all these scope of services typically done? I know you're leaving here real soon, but I'm assuming that you will have a replacement, hopefully sooner than later. So we might not need the, you know, Sickich to do this stuff, because we will have a new finance director, at which time then we would just tell them we don't need you to do Appendix A, or how will that work?
Well, and you're right, it's just, it's a timing factor. The auditors come in to do their preliminary work the second week in May, so your fiscal year is ending April 30th. So there's already things that I'm starting to do to prepare for the audit. There's a lot of things that can't be done until April 30th, and I will not be here. And then there's a lot of things that need to be done before the preliminary field work in the middle of May. And pretty much, you're not going to have anybody in place by that time. Then the auditors come out for their final field work the end of June. So, you know, possibly some of that work could be done. It just depends on the person who replaces me, if they've started by then. That's, this is a big thing to step into right when you first start a brand-new job. So it all just kind of depends, which is why you're seeing the not to exceed. So hopefully, it doesn't come to that, but it possibly could.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all of them. Alderman Porter?
What was it normally, the cost?
So this is on top of what your normal audit costs. Your normal audit costs, it costs us roughly, I'd have to look on the back page, about $36,000 to $37,000. Just depending, we also have to have a single audit this year because of all the federal grant money that we received last year. So that triggers what's called a single audit, so that's another $1,700. I did budget for that, because I knew that was coming. But this is, this is work that is separate from what the auditors do. They have a separate group of people that would come in and do some of the administrative work to get, to get everything prepared for the audit. So this is, this is on top of what the actual audit is. It's all the administrative work leading up to the audit.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all of them, excuse me, all those in favor of a motion on the floor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arrevalo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to the last item on the agenda, which would be a discussion of the General Mills Park easement agreement and how the General Mills grant for this year relates to that. Becky?
You received a letter in your packet that the city had been awarded an additional $25,000 from General Mills to do additional improvements at the park. Today, I did receive the official letter from the General Mills Foundation as well as the $25,000 check. Obviously, we will not deposit this until it's approved by the council. Also, any purchases that are related to the grant would come back before city council for approval. So we'd be looking for a motion to accept the $25,000 grant from General Mills.
I have a motion not effect. Frank, I have a motion from Alderman Frank and second by Alderman Snow. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of a motion on the floor to accept the $25,000 grant from General Mills. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arrevalo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Approved unanimously. So let's talk about the easement.
As a follow-up to that, if you have the easement agreement that was in your packets, if you go back, go to the last page, the exhibit page, will be the easiest to look at. And the easement area, the 6,811 square feet on the south side of the property, that easement area is where the planned basketball court, junior-sized basketball court would be installed. The property, the existing park property, the playground's in the kind of middle towards the southwest. There's vacant field on the, adjacent to Christie Lane, and that's basically the size of a junior soccer field. So we wanted to keep that open, and in fact, this grant contemplates purchase of two soccer goals for that portion of the park. So we've talked to Mr. Heath, the owner of the property, to the south, and he's indicated he's in favor of granting the easement to allow us to do that construction. And in fact, he has purchased the balance of the majority of the Wayne Scott property in that area, and he plans on eventually developing that area. And there's probably some plenary plans in the works at least to maybe even expand the park limits even further. But again, that'll be taken up as part of the annexation process of his development. So I would recommend approval of the General Mills Park easement.
And Mr. Mayor, before, there's a motion, if I may.
Yes.
With respect to the easement agreement, I did draft the easement agreement already. I have forwarded to Mr. Heath, who's the owner of the Lake Bonita LLC. I have not heard back from him yet on the easement agreement to know whether it's acceptable to them or not. Also, one of the things that the city should do, and it's something that every attorney must recommend to its client, whenever you're purchasing real property or getting an interest in real property like an easement, is to conduct what's called a Phase One, an all-appropriate inquiry on the environmentals of the property, as long as it's not used as residential. This was not, it was part of a quarry. So I have not priced those out yet. I can tell you that the cost of the Phase One for the former manly lot, when we purchased that, was $1,300. I have asked Mr. Heath to send me his existing Phase Ones that he did when he bought the property from the Wayne Scott Trust. We can look at that, see what the results were. It's up to the council whether they want to do the Phase One all-appropriate inquiry. If you choose not to, what that means is if there ever was environmental liability, we'd be on the hook the same as if we created the liability. Whereas if we do a Phase One, it gives us some immunities. There may be some cleanup costs down the road, but again, you'd know if it was there or not, once you did those Phase Ones. But you would not be subject to penalties or anything else from the EPA, so long as you do your due diligence to conduct that Phase One. So when this gets to the council, the recommendation would probably be to do a Phase One all-appropriate inquiry on as well. I can get some estimates for that. But the council could choose not to. It's not legally required, it's just the safe thing to do.
Okay, so what do you want?
Well, at this point, I think Brent wants to move forward the easement agreement. Again, though, we have not received a sign-off on it from the grantor.
I guess just note for the council that the grant project will not move forward until we have obtained the easement.
I have a question.
Okay. So ahead, Alderman Freeman?
So I'm, I'm very happy that, you know, we have this General Mills Park, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, but I think we actually annexed that one quarter of the park into the city. And it's great that General Mills keeps supplying funding in the form of grants and donations to upgrade the park and expand the park. My question is, once we've pretty much annexed all of this into the city, do we have any type of agreement with General Mills as far as like maintenance needs for the park in the future? Are they going to supply money to, you know, continually maintenance, maintenance it?
I know as part of the-
Or is that, is that going to just be, is that just going to be, like, the city is going to own a park that, that we're going to be maintaining?
Well, I can speak to currently, we are maintaining the property because it is owned, and in fact, it is the city's park. That's our second city park. The farming, the area around Farmington Fields is, was designated as our first city park.
And I can't speak to full maintenance by General Mills, but I know that they have, they're always, especially our local workers here are looking for volunteer opportunities. And I think a great volunteer opportunity for them would be to invest some time and effort in General Mills Park. So they have expressed that option as well.
Okay, what, you know, my concern is like equipment, equipment wears out, and equipment needs to be replaced and stuff like that. So my hope is that General Mills will continue to award us grant money when we need to do that.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
And along those lines, I'm assuming it has the name of General Mills Park, but that's only because they gave us such large funding to initiate the existence of it. It doesn't mean that they're liable for it in going forward.
Correct, correct. And I think that's probably why we were able to get the funding the second time around, is because there's now a General Mills Park in Belvedere and, you know.
Okay. So do we want them to take any action at all this evening concerning this?
I would recommend a motion except approving the easement for the General Mills Park.
May I have a motion? Okay. Frank made the motion, Flurry seconded. All those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton? Brereton?
Aye. Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arrevalo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion's approved unanimously. Thank you. I wanted to ask everybody to stand and give Ms. Tobin a standing ovation for the work that she's done for the city. This is her last meeting. Thank you. This will also be my last meeting. I had planned my vacation, so I'm going to take my vacation. Couple of things I wanted to say to the community. The last 16 years have been the most amazing experience in my life. We have endured hardship. We have had joy. We have had sorrow. I would wish this community health, happiness, and good fortune in the future. And thank you all for your participation in city government, because city government is the purest form of government left on the planet. So thank you all. Adios. So I guess all those in favor of journeying, reply by saying aye. So I guess all those in favor of joining, reply by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Good night.